We have a corn present. We have a couple of employees tonight that we want to recognize, so I'm going to ask, Thomas Doty and Mayor Britton and Cindy Trent Doty to please come to the way.
This was a really special mayhem for most you know Cindy's my wife and I just happened to think as she walked around that podium that last time I remember that we were getting married in this courtroom. She came down here, that was the aisle. It's been wonderful. We've been married for ten years and loved every minute of it. And thank you so much for what you've done for the county. Served twenty years with juvenile and we as county commissioner in Hamlet County really appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Jeff Akers, Keith Ealing and Suzanne Smith to please come to the well.
I want to begin by thanking Suzanne for all the dedicated years donated without any damage to Hamlet County. She's, I know she's worked really hard. Her dedication, it means a lot to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. He says I never filter anything I say, so I hope this goes down okay. He'll let me know tomorrow.
Wait a minute, I already got enough gray hairs.
But this has been a privilege for me. It's been the, really the best thing that ever happened to me. It's paid a lot of bills. It's kept insurance in our family, which I'm very thankful for. And I have a good boss that I love like a brother. So, and all of our employees, it's just like one big happy family. And this is the first time I've met Mr. Akers, so it's good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'll be calling.
Thank you ladies. At this time, we want to give an opportunity to any of you who would like to make public comments regarding any items that's on the agenda. You can do that at this time. Please come to the podium and identify yourself. You've got three minutes.
My name is Linda Nowey, twenty-three, forty-two Stevens Road. Before I make my comments, I want to make a donation to the Sons of the Revolution in honor of my father, William W. Captain, U.S. Navy, World War II, and my husband, Ronald L. Nowey, U.S. Army, Vietnam. Having done that, I want to say that I am concerned about how this memorial has been handled. I don't think any, I hope none of you, particularly businessmen, would start out a project and then rip things up, kind of like starting a house, building the foundation and then saying, how am I going to pay for the rest of it? Well, most of us can't go and get other people's money. And this is a wonderful project. There is absolutely no doubt about it. In fact, the city council is working on a project with the Vietnam veterans. I was at their meeting on Tuesday up at Heritage Park. But you have to plan for something. And like your jail, this has not been planned well or handled well. I'm not sure what the solution is at this point. There are lots of things that could be done. Rather than taking it from your general fund, you could take it from what you donated to the city to work on their building. You could take it from the hundred thousand dollars you gave to a state facility, applied technology, wonderful project, but it's a state duty. There are many other things. You could obviously take it from the Joint Economic and Community Development Board as well. So you might, well, I know you won't consider it, but those, those are the things that are so glaring about the way things are done. Money goes here, there, everywhere, without a thought. Things are rough shock, boom, let's start on something, and nine years later we find we're short. So perhaps even you should take over this project. Take the money and the equipment or the, you know, the benches and bricks and let this, let you handle it if you're going to put money into it. But let this be a lesson learned. Get your facts, get your money before you start spending it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one else then, we'll move on to the agenda. At this time, we come to the election of vice chairman. We would entertain a motion for nominees for vice chair.
I make a motion, we put Tim Gohens in as vice chair.
Okay, we have a motion that Tim Gohens be nominated for vice chair. Are there other nominees?
I make a motion, nominate Randy DeBoer.
Okay, Randy DeBoer is nominated. Are there other nominees? Hearing no other nominees then, we will vote on Tim Gohens and Randy DeBoer. Madam clerk, please call the roll and as your name is called, indicate the person that you're voting for.
Jeff Akers.
Tim Gohens.
Chris Cutshaw.
Randy DeBoer.
Randy DeBoer.
Yes.
You don't vote on this.
Randy DeBoer.
Thomas Doty.
Randy DeBoer.
Tim Gohens.
Tim Gohens.
Bobby Hahn.
Tim Gohens.
Tim Horner.
Tim Gohens.
Joe Hansman.
Tim Gohens.
Scotty Long.
Tim Gohens.
Wayne Neesmith.
Tim Gohens.
Howard Shipley.
Tim Gohens.
Jim Stapp.
Tim Gohens.
Taylor Ward.
Tim Gohens.
Ten for ten and three for the board.
Congratulations on your reelection as vice chair. And the chairman at this time will yield the chair to you for the person of the chairman.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have an election for the chair, chairman. Do we have anybody that wants to put on, put anybody on the board?
I nominate Howard Shipley.
Howard Shipley? Anybody else? Saying done, we call the roll.
Jeff Akers.
Howard Shipley.
Chris Cutshaw.
Howard Shipley.
Randy DeBoer.
Howard Shipley.
Thomas Doty.
Howard Shipley.
Tim Gohens.
Howard Shipley.
Bobby Hahn.
Howard Shipley.
Tim Horner.
Howard Shipley.
Joe Hansman.
Howard Shipley.
Scotty Long.
Howard Shipley.
Wayne Neesmith.
Abstain.
Howard Shipley.
Howard Shipley.
Jim Stapp.
Howard Shipley.
Taylor Ward.
Howard Shipley.
Twelve for Howard and one abstain.
Chairman, congratulations. Thank you. It has been an honor to serve you during the last eleven months and I look forward to serving you again during the next year and appreciate your, your support. Work together as a team and I think we will continue to do so and I appreciate that very much. Okay, at this time, we would entertain a motion for the salary of the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to the salary remain the same.
Okay, we have a motion, the salary remains the same. Taylor Ward has seconded the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, I guess we need to do this.
We can do a roll call since it involves the.
Okay, yeah, roll call.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Tim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yes.
Okay, the motion carries. At this time, we would entertain a motion for county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Chris Capson.
Okay, we have a nomination for Chris Capson. Sir, he's second. We really don't need second, but other nominees? Hearing none then, I would entertain a motion that nomination sees and that he be elected by acclamation. Chris Cutshaw, Taylor Ward. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known, again, by roll call.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim, Tim Horner.
Abstain.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
No.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Stapp.
Yes.
Taylor Ward.
Yep.
Eleven yeses, one abstain and one no.
Congratulations.
Chairman Shipley, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Okay.
I need it.
At this time, we would entertain a motion that we confirm the mayor's appointment of Thomas Doty to the E nine one, E nine one one board. I need to point out that the expiration date is August the thirty-first, twenty-twenty, not twenty-twenty-two. It's August the thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Taylor Ward and Bobby Hahn is second. Okay? Any discussion? Since I don't think this one involves any money, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, congratulations on your appointment. Okay. Counter rules committee report, Chairman Hansman, you are recognized.
Does anybody like to speak to?
You need to just accept, you need to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent counter.
We have a motion to approve the consent counter. Is there a second?
Second.
Tim Horner has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular counter.
All right, we have a motion to approve the regular counter. Is there a second?
Second.
James Stapp has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none then, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Hansman. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion that we approve the consent counter. Thomas Doty moves, is there a second? Tim Horner seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Finance committee chairman, Randy DeBoer, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item six A, the approval of the monthly checks for August, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? Thomas Doty second.
All, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
We probably need to vote on this.
Vote it on.
Yeah.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yeses, zero no.
The motion is approved.
Item six B, the budget amendments. Item one is Fund One-on-One for Sheriff's Department for ten thousand, three fifty. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Chris Cutshaw seconded the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, then let's vote the motion by roll call.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yeses, zero no.
The motion is approved.
Item six B two, Fund One-on-One for Circuit Court Clerk, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thomas Doty seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none then, please call the roll.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yeses, zero no.
The motion is approved.
Item six B three, Fund One-on-One for sixteen seventy, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
James Stapp has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, then let's vote the motion by roll call.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yeses, zero no.
The motion is approved.
Item six B four, Fund One-on-One for county clerk of twenty-five thousand dollars, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Bobby Hahn has seconded the motion. Any discussion?
Why are we spending twenty-five thousand dollars on this system? It don't work.
It's not on this system. I'm sorry.
It's not on this system.
Oh, it's not on this system?
I would agree.
What do we pay for this system?
Penny, Penny can answer your question.
It's not on this system. It's for the new upgrade we have to have for the Windows ten and it's no new money. That's my reserve money. There's no new money.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yeses, zero no.
The motion is approved.
Item six C, and I would like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn this over to Mayor Britton.
Okay.
This is for bid award for the convenience center improvements out at the landfill paid partly by a state grant. The, the bids came, came back insufficient, like we didn't have any bids on the gate and only one on the paving and two on the concrete pads, so we're going to rebid the, the project and we'll come back next month and report on it.
This is taken from the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, probably a motion to reject the bid or see would be, would be appropriate.
All right, we would entertain a motion to reject the bids. I'd pay our board, our, the board seconded the motion. Any discussion? Vote the motion, please. Oh, I can begin to all this, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is approved.
Item D for the veterans' memorial funding request, and I put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, James Stapp has seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
This, we're looking at twenty thousand more dollars. And when we get through this, that memorial's going to cost a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Plus twenty more, that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for that memorial that we've been working on for over eight years.
That, that hundred and forty-seven includes the twenty.
It includes it. I know the six flag poles and the lights is going, is going to be like twenty-five thousand and five thousand or sixty dollars for each flag. It seems, it just seems like a lot of money and it's taken a lot of time and we've been promised over and over and over, we're going to get this thing fixed, but we're, we're not going to, but this money, where we're taking it from, we're giving money out just like it's candy. Right across the street, we're at Road Center, city-owned property. We give them five thousand dollars and put their internet or their cable in for them. But yet, that's a city-owned building and talking to the guys on these flag poles, the city didn't contribute one penny to this flag pole.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mayor Britton to please address the Road Center project.
Just, just update on the Road Center project. We spent three hundred dollars on the Road Center project. Our IT guy did the project himself. He had to buy three hundred dollars worth of tools and so we spent three hundred dollars on it.
And we still have the tool.
Pardon?
We still have the tool.
We still have the tool and we'll keep it.
Question, but we did, in our budget this year, we gave them five thousand dollars.
It was, the, the budget this year has five thousand dollars appropriated to Road Center. The, the wiring project was eight thousand dollars out of money left over for the, I think it was the, the alarm project, I think. It was another project anyway, that there was eight, there was, last fiscal year, there was eighteen thousand dollars appropriated for a project at Road Center. We spent ten, I think. We had, we spent eight, so that leaves us ten. And so we appropriated eight for this wiring project. We spent three and that was out of last year's budget, so the other eighty-seven hundred dollars went to fund balance. And then this year, we did appropriate five thousand dollars, which is what we've been doing the last several weeks for cap, for capital needs.
Thank you. Chris Cutshaw, you're right.
Yes, sir. I'm going to make an amendment to this motion, but first, could I ask Mr. Rutherford to stand and answer a question or two?
Yes.
Could you please? We're, we're just in an effort to be accountable.
Sure.
We'd like to have a balance to our expense sheet to know how much maybe the county's already invested, just to make some accountability to what we're.
Sure, be glad to.
Yes, sir. If you can do that for us, I'd like to make a motion that we amend per his expense and balance sheet that we spend up to twenty thousand, but if it's less, we don't.
All right, you have the amendment to the motion. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Bobby Hahn seconded the amendment. Any discussion to the amendment?
Could you read that amendment?
Okay, that we.
I had a hard time here.
That we spend up to twenty thousand dollars. If we don't spend that much, then we don't want to spend that much.
Yeah, that's correct. But, but in that, I'd like to see where the expenses are right now and what's left to be spent on.
All right.
For your sheet.
Sure.
Before you ever got any money back, you always spend.
Yes, a lot of times we get money back and it goes into the general fund.
We didn't get it from Road Center, did we?
Well, at this. Okay, Mayor Britton, you address that.
On the Road Center projects, we paid for the project.
Right.
So we didn't give them money to give back.
How about the ten thousand?
All right, of the ten thousand, we spent three hundred of it. And so, but we did not give them the ten thousand. We, we kept it, we paid the bill for three hundred dollars and then, so the ninety-seven hundred stayed with us and it's in the fund balance of the general fund.
It went back in the fund balance.
Yes.
Yeah, it went back.
Yes.
Maybe this money will come back.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment? We're going to vote the amendment now. Call the roll.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Gohens.
Abstain.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hansman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
We call abstain also.
Eleven yeses, two abstains.
The amendment is approved. We're back to the original motion as amended. Is there any more discussion on the original motion as amended? If not, then let's vote the motion. Call the roll, please.
Do we do? Second one.
Yeah, that's okay.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Goins.
Upstate.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hunsman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
No.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward. Ten ayes, one no to abstains.
Okay, the motion is approved, thank you, Chairman, we appreciate that. At this time, Public Service Committee, uh, Chairman Tim Goins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to call first up, committee order.
You just need to make a motion.
I'd like to make amendment, uh, no, I'd like to make a motion, so we passed the fifteen items, it's on, uh, IT office to, uh, turn in. Do you want me to read each one of them?
No.
Okay.
We have a motion to, uh, approve these two plus items, Joe Hunsman has seconded the motion, any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Jeff Akers.
Aye.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBoer.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Aye.
Tim Goins.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Aye.
Joe Hunsman.
Aye.
Scotty Long.
Aye.
Wayne Neesmith.
Aye.
Howard Shipley.
Aye.
Jim Stapp.
Aye.
Taylor Ward.
Aye.
Thirteen yeses, zero no.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Chairman, call ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, Goins. At this time, we would entertain, uh, any comments from the public, please come to the voting, identify yourself, you have three minutes, any.
I know I can't film, I'm just. Nigel Reed with Forty-two Sixty-Five Open Circle apartment. Hi. This is what I'm here to speak about today, this afternoon. Preacher that was here, Preacher Presley, and her daughter, Jasmine Byrd, and her assistant, Tanya Jennings. Now, doesn't have anything to do with the commission, or it has something to do with slander, I don't care who it is, I'm tired of people saying that I'm not on my medication and can't prove it, point blank, period. I saw my doctor just yesterday, she gave me a prescription to go get my blood drawn, it's like I told this preacher on Facebook, well, false preacher, false prophet. I'm gonna have my blood drawn. If this person can't prove that I'm not on my Depakote, which Melissa Ballou, which is our roommate, and my wife, she witnessed my wife giving me my medication every single day. I'm tired. That goes for anybody. Don't ever, now, we say things behind my back, and I hear about it, whatever, I'm suing for slander, defamation of character, mental anguish, stress, whatever. That's it. Thank you for your time, I believe every last one of you feel the same way. Oh, yeah, now, my wife, Amy, she won a lawsuit, okay, doesn't matter which one, but this church aggravated her to pay her tithes, which really was supposed to have been twenty Gs. I taught Amy to just give him ten Gs, okay? This preacher, Jennifer Presley, has every last one of y'all blindsided, thinking that.
Nigel, your time's up, we appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
Thinking that she's a good intuitive shoes, no.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
My name is Pauline Holgland, I live at twenty-three, forty-three, September. I'm here on, about the Hamlin County Marshland Joint Economic and Community Development Board meeting on September the ninth. No one was there, Mr. Britton wasn't there, Mr. Chestney wasn't there, and you, Mr. Shipley, was not there, why was that meeting canceled?
Because there has been a challenge that the committee is not, an official committee, elected, approved by both legislative bodies, that has not happened, and I understand that in the very near future, each of the bodies will be, uh, considering that, and it will not meet until it receives official approval.
Okay, well, I went upstairs myself to find out why the meeting was canceled, I wanted to see if your answer was like Mr. Horn's was, and she said that the board members said you've got to fix the two thousand one interlocal agreement, and that, that's established, and the board and its members, that's just what you just said. So just a month ago, you had Marshall Ramsey and Bill Britton tell you the board had, had eight members, I was here at the meeting, so I heard it, one, one, uh, are legally appointed, that is not the truth, they're not legally appointed, because you just said that your board was not even legal. So, that is not the truth, so, and Mr. Ramsey isn't even a legal member. So, you know, from last month, the way that he was talking and everything, you know, I think he owes somebody an apology, I won't mention the name, I'll let you, I'll figure it out, because he called that person a liar, and he shouldn't have been there, he owes that person an apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Hey, y'all, my name's Larry White, I'm from East Town, in the county, I'm here to kind of remind you about the red flag law we talked about last month, I still think it's unthought suitable, and it's detrimental to any law-abiding citizen, and also blitzkrieg, I mean, because they're the ones that's gonna have to put their life on the line with this. I think it's very unconstitutional, and I don't even like to have to be here talking about it, but somebody has to, so, our group is here to talk about it tonight, uh, it's just, I don't know how to say it, it's just very unconstitutional, and I, I am a constitutional, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, I'm an American. Amen. And I'm here for our Second Amendment rights, and this is all against our Second Amendment rights, I feel like, you know, this country is going in the wrong direction, there has not been one gun law that has prevented anything that I know of, anything, and more gun laws, all you're doing is hurting the innocent. This red flag law is one of the worst, and if anybody has read anything about this red flag law, you understand it, especially if you're a constitutional person, and I believe in our Bill of Rights and our Constitution, and I look for y'all, the other party, and our love to them, that's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Running Joe Johnson, I'm a white, I'm just gonna refresh down some of this stuff on this red flag deal, um, Constitution and Bill of Rights says a man has got an opportunity to place his accusation, with this law, you don't have your opportunity, you're guilty until you're proven innocent. Bill of Rights reads, you're innocent until proven guilty, it goes against Constitution and Bill of Rights, both. Anybody got any questions, what we talked about last month, or wanna ask anything, I'm try to answer, but it goes against Constitution and the Bill of Rights, it's, it's not fair. Somebody can turn, go to judge, turn me in, because they don't like me, you got a lot of pride, and whatever, next thing I know, they're beating on my door four, five o'clock in the morning, you're under arrest, like everybody else, someone beating on my door four, five o'clock in the morning, I'm gonna go to jail, and when they out at my door, and I say, God, one, I'm gonna be dead, or they're not gonna let you. It's just that simple, this red flag law is against common sense, it's against Constitution, it's against Bill of Rights. Any questions? Any. Everybody clear the money, all right?
Okay, thank you. Do we have, do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
My name is Bonnie Bullington, I live at three seventeen Stepford Phil Street in Whitesboro, uh, we came last month to address the commission, and we didn't get all our information across to everybody, uh, I left a packet with the commission, and then emailed the ones that had emailed addresses with all the information, so, everybody should pretty much have all that, but I would like to request, uh, the commission to put on next month's agenda a resolution to have Hamlin County, uh, declaring their support for the Second Amendment, and turning it into a Second Amendment secretary. And I can read this, or just hand it to you, it's very short, declaration.
I just hand it to, uh, the mayor, not here, we'll do it to his executive secretary, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? We have several announcements that I want to call your attention to, do you? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're fine. My name is Melissa Ballou, and I live at thirty-seven, twenty-eight Halifax Circle, here in Morristown, um, I was one of the ones that tried to get the, uh, group that had taken over the animal shelter out a few years back, well, the same group is now trying to take it down again, and get Misty Kirk out it. Um, I have proof, I, I'd love to show the commissioners, anyone that's wanting to see it, um, it's Noah's Ark, and I really think Noah's Ark needs to be addressed, because they're attacking people, death threats, stealing people's animals, and I think the county commission needs to address this, it's been happening for years, they're not an animal rescue group, they're an animal rights group, they want animals like the EU registered as sentient beings, and they're attacking farmers, anybody they can in Tennessee. Of course, the leader of it is coming out of UD, but that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment.
One more, and I'll, I'll be.
Okay.
Mr. Gordon, here's a little bit of action.
My name is Tris Archer, and I live in the thirteenth district, I'm gonna be the one to open up the dirty sector of the county, but I know you all are getting ready to have a meeting Monday afternoon for a new appointment, and I would love for it, I know there's talk out there, we want this person to have this job, and this person wants that job, and that's all fine and good, but minus one of the thirteen of you all took a note to do what was right for your constituents, I wish you would get out of here and knock doors, talk to the people in your district, see what the people want, that's what you're here for, Mr. Long, I love your wife, I think you're a good businessman, this is nothing against you, I think you can do well in the job, but this is a time with so much distrust, you need to know what the people want, we did beggars souring, and, you know, come May and August the next year, they can speak again, and in two years, you're all up for reelection, be careful and do what the people want. I mean, that's just something that we need to do, and the, where you were talking about, the gentleman here, he wanted to itemize statement from you, Mr. Cutshaw, don't try to ask him for that over a year ago, and he never got it, good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yeah, speak very quick and brief.
I want to ask the county commission, next month, if they would, to vote on this resolution, to make Hamlin County a constitutional county, where we provide the Constitution and Bill of Rights, but I'm just, I'm asking for a vote.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Sir, I promise, you'll agree. I'm the main one that needs to speak about this, because people feel that with my disability of, uh, being bipolar, I might be put on that red flag list, and I, I would have nothing to do with it, I don't know what's, what's going on, that's not fair to me, or other people with disabilities, point blank, period.
Okay, thank you, Nigel. Okay, let's go through the announcements, I want to point out the first one, there's the change of, uh, the normal meeting date, it's on Tuesday, not Monday, Tuesday, October the fifteenth, this is the October committee meeting at, uh, five thirty, here in the large courtroom, our commission meeting in October will be Thursday, October the twenty-fourth, at five PM here in the large courtroom, there's another announcement here regarding the adverse childhood experience and the State of Tennessee Initiative to address ACE is entitled, and they give the reason for the meeting, that's on Wednesday, October the ninth, at eleven AM in the community room at the Hamlin County Health Department. Commissioners are reminded of the, uh, Tennessee County Commission Association regional meeting, Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth, at five thirty, uh, in Knoxville, what time do they need to be here in order to? You need to be here at four thirty, those of you who are going, need to be here at four thirty, okay? Also note that the Jail Justice Center proposal presentation is Thursday, October the seventeenth, at five PM here in the courthouse, I want to remind all commissioners of the special call meeting to fill the trustee vacancy, which will be Monday, October the twenty-third, at five PM here in, I say, I believe that's five thirty, five thirty PM here in the courtroom, I'm sorry, it's five thirty. Okay, one other announcement, uh, new committee assignments will be made very soon, and if you have a committee that you wanna be on, I would appreciate it if you would let me know between now and Monday, uh, and, uh, and we'll get those assignments out to you hopefully on Tuesday, uh, the twenty-fourth, okay? You'll stand there.